I understand.
Okay, I should start.
But I'm willing to look at everything. I have no problem whatsoever.
Getting up and down is the hardest.
Oh, yeah, I get you. Mike's going to wait and stand up for us.
Let's turn this chair around.
Almost there.
Everybody for standing. I'll call this common council meeting to order. We'll start with the invocation by Jack Bullhite.
Let's pray. Father God, I come before you tonight acknowledging that you are the one and only true God, sovereign, who blesses and provides. I thank you for your many blessings that benefit the peace people of Warsaw. I pray, Lord, that you will guide and direct these proceedings as the council contemplates the business of our town. I ask that you give every council member the knowledge, discernment, and wisdom needed to guide our city in a way that is pleasing to you and beneficial to its inhabitants. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Seated. Welcome everybody tonight. It's here. Lynn, for the record, the entire membership is present. Legal is here as well. First item we have is the approval of the minutes from the October 20th meeting.
Having read the minutes, I would move to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. Thank you. The ayes have it. And I want to welcome all of our visitors here tonight. David Finley, thank you for coming. Lisa, thank you from Lake City Bank. I've invited them here to share a little bit about their project, their continued investment in the downtown as well as across the state of Indiana. Thank you for coming and sharing with us tonight. Any help that you need or is it working? Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor, we do appreciate this opportunity to be with you guys tonight. It's been a few years since I came and gave an update on the things we were doing in Coziesco County and specifically in Warsaw, Indiana. And Lisa O'Neill is our chief financial officer. Lisa's been with the bank for 11 years. And I've been the CEO for the last 11 years, but then chairman for the last four as well. And when you think about the history of Lake City Bank in Warsaw, Indiana, it's a wonderful story. Lisa and I and Kristin Pruitt, the president of the bank, had a call this afternoon with prospective investors. As you all know, we're a publicly traded company. And this doesn't happen very often anymore, but we had two investors that didn't know the Lake City Bank story at all. And one of the things people always ask us is how in the world have you done this in a small town like Warsaw, Indiana? And have a history like the bank has had. And it really is, having been here 25 years, it's a great opportunity for us to talk about how great a place this is for this bank to be headquartered. And when Jeff and I talked about our investment being made in the Innovation and Technology Center, I said I would love to come and talk to the city council about what we've done, not only with respect to this building, which Lisa will address, but more importantly with what Warsaw means to us. And so, Lisa, you're advancing. So you all know this, but the bank was founded here 153 years ago. And we've had the same name on the door for 153 years. And I'm amazed when I think about it. The Civil War had not ended less than a decade before. And here, investors come together in Warsaw, Indiana, put money on the table and say, we need a fourth bank in this town of 2,000 people. And that took some incredible foresight because they probably didn't need a fourth bank, but they didn't like what they had, and they created Lake City Bank. Today, we've got 55 offices in 15 Indiana counties. As you all know, we're in central Indiana. We just opened our ninth office in the Indianapolis market earlier this summer. We've got outside of Indianapolis, 46 other branches throughout north central and northeast Indiana with the South Bend, Elkhart, Warsaw, Fort Wayne, Indianapolis footprint being the primary footprint we've got. We are a $7 billion bank today. Last time I was in this room, we were a $4 billion bank. And we employ over 700 people as the sixth largest bank in the state. And for those of you that are not students of Indiana banking like I am, Indiana had very archaic banking laws. And we were not allowed, you all might remember, we were not allowed as banks to go cross county lines until 1983. And so, Indiana banks always had one arm tied behind their back to expand geographically. And then when cross-county banking came, the first thing we did, Doug Grant, one of my predecessors, who is still with us and still very active in discussions about the bank, Doug said, I'm going to Elkhart. Because big banks had bought the two banks in Elkhart, and Doug knew that the big banks were going to mess it up. And since I'm from Elkhart and I grew up there, I knew exactly what Doug was talking about. Today, we've got 287 employees in downtown Warsaw. We've got six facilities, all of which, except for our main office, have been repurposed from something they were into a Lake City Bank building. We also have beyond that five additional Warsaw branch locations. Just think about that. We've got nine branches in Indianapolis and five in Warsaw. And we've never closed a branch in Warsaw. And we don't intend to. We think that our branch locations are an important statement of our commitment to Warsaw, Indiana. It's an understatement to say we're active and engaged in the community. Our people at the bank are extensively involved in community initiatives. And we take pride in that. We don't require people to do it, but we say, please be involved in the communities we operate. It matters to them. And then the other thing, we don't talk a lot about around Coziesco County, but as a publicly traded company, we obviously have a market capitalization. And the market cap of Lakeland Financial, our holding company, is $1.6 billion. When I joined the bank, it was 25 years ago, it was about $112 million. And so, that's a true valuation that we've got in a publicly traded company like Zimmer Biomet headquartered in Warsaw. All right, Lisa, we are proud of our Warsaw roots. And I remember I had the bullet points in there last time I was in front of you all. And I was thinking, why were we in front of you all? And then when you drive down into the presentation, it was when we were trying to get control of the alleyways around our primary campus at Center in Indiana. And I felt like we had to come in and say, here's what we want to do. And I remember at the time, I said, we're going to create a park that happens to have a parking lot in it. And if you think about what it looks like, particularly from Center Street as you drive east and west, and what you see is beautiful landscaping and our drive-through facility. And then if you go north, south, you see again beautiful landscaping and some parking spaces. And that's how committed we were to doing the right thing by taking control of those alleyways. I won't read all these, but we are here because we've been taken care of to be here. More importantly, we've taken care of the community that takes care of us. And so, the investment that Lisa's going to talk about that we've made in Coziesco County is really a reflection of how much pride we have in being headquartered in Warsaw. Back to that question of how have you done this in Warsaw, Indiana? Our leadership team has roots in Fort Wayne, South Bend, Indianapolis, actually up in Michigan. And yet, every Monday morning, that team comes together in Warsaw. We meet for our management committee and we start our week together. Everybody on that leadership team is based, their primary office is here in Warsaw. But we obviously are reaching into all the markets we go into. I put this bullet point back in here about return full time in April 2021. When we felt we had the comfort to do it during the pandemic, we brought everybody back to work five days a week in Warsaw in April of 2021. I think there's other employers who will go unnamed that haven't brought people back to work entirely in Warsaw yet. Those nearly 300 people that we have, they eat downtown, they shop downtown, they're engaged in downtown. Sometimes they park inappropriately downtown, which I know, and we're going to try to fix that too. But we are core, we think, to the economic viability of downtown Warsaw. And because I've been involved with OrthoWorks since day one, we talk so much at OrthoWorks about we live, work, and play in Coziesco County. We actually do that. I mean, our commitment is very real to this county. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Lisa to talk about the Innovation and Technology Center.
Good evening. It's a real honor to be here before all of you and to get a chance to talk about the Innovation and Technology Center. We started planning for the building in January of 2025. At the time, we thought we would just remodel the three floors, but then quickly determined that we should also incorporate the basement because we had use for a larger conference room where people could access the floor using the elevator. We don't have an elevator in any of our other buildings. And we will have capacity. Well, I guess, yes, but for reaching gathering spaces. Yeah, good point. And we will have capacity for 109 employees. At the onset, the building will not be fully occupied because we've allowed for growth. It seems like every time we remodel, we find ourselves in a situation where, oh, we need to remodel again because we need to add capacity for more space. So, right now, we've planned for 109 spaces for employees. And as you can tell, as you've been driving around downtown, you can see the work that's being done on the exterior part of the building, the envelope, as they call it, in preparation for getting that finished before it gets really cold and they can then focus on the interior part of the building. We were also really excited to be able to keep the original brick. The brick was from Ohio and it was in very good state. And so, it made us very happy that we would be able to repurpose a lot of it. And there's an employee in the bank and her father-in-law was one of the original masons that put up the brick in the building when it was built back in the 60s. So, that's been a neat story. And then all of the mechanical and HVAC systems were pretty much original to the building from the 60s. And so, there was really nothing we could save. We have donated a lot of interesting pieces that David Gustafson has wanted for some of his work that he's doing throughout the city. So, we've tried to give away things like doorways and parts that would, you know, trying to keep them out of a landfill. So, that's the building. And that's literally what it looks like right now. I'm sure you've driven by it. But every day, those huge dumpsters are filled up with all of the materials that they're taking out of the building. They've finished the work on the north side. They're working on the Indiana street side. And the southern point of this picture, they're going to start to take out the actual cinder blocks and those will be more windows to allow more light in the building for the employees. So, that's going to be sort of an interesting next phase of what's going on on the exterior. And our architects also found that there was quite a bit of structural repair that was needed to support each of the floors. And so, that's been sort of the first work that they've done. And so, you've probably seen some of the brick coming off and some of the brick being put back in there. But there was quite a bit of structural repairs that were needed. So, this slide gives you an indication of the money that we have been putting into the Warsaw downtown campus, as we call it. And our people development center is listed first. That's our human resource center. It's just down the street here on Buffalo Street. We had to designate years covered because we've been putting in money into these buildings over the years that are presented. The operations building has also received a lot of remodels and growth. The main office and the drive-through with quite a big remodel that took place right before the pandemic. The consumer and home loan building, which is right next to our people development center here on Buffalo Street, that too, we purchased and fully remodeled and connected it to the people development center. The Lakeland Financial building is across the street from our operations center and next to the pizzeria, the new pizzeria. And we have several teams in that building. Pretty much every building that you see, we will have teams in all levels, including the lower level. Innovation and Technology Building, which we rented from 2012 until 2024, when we bought the building, we had quite a bit of remodel going on there. So, that's why that line is different. And over the years, we've always had a lot of parking lot reservations. And we're thankful that during non-business hours, that the city can use the parking lots for all the different activities that go on downtown. And then the innovation and technology, the whole project is including, the purchase of the building is included in that $12.6 million number, which is quite a big number. And we're very excited about it. But that brings all these investments going back to 2010 to $22.2 million, which is really impressive and highlights our commitment to Warsaw.
For those of you that have been around Warsaw longer than me, you can probably tell me what our buildings were. But go back to that last one. The Lakeland Financial building on the south side of Market Street was the new Klein's Carpe store. The operations center on the north side of Market Street was the old Klein's Carpe store. Our people development center, I've heard various explanations as to what it was over the years, but it was a lot of different things. And I will never forget coming to the bank in 2000 and going on a tour with Mike Kabak, my predecessor as CEO at the bank, and him describing what these buildings were, and rerouted the corner and went around to the front of the people development center. And the display windows were still there, full glass display windows. And Alan Decker, who was leading Lake City University at the time, had used mannequins that had been there previously to create stories in those windows. It related Lake City Bank things like products and services and sailboats, which were never really part of our logo, but the ayes made it that. And so, and then the building across the street, when I came here, was a forest shop for the, but is now a consumer and home loan building. And obviously, the Innovation and Technology Building, George White, who was, when I came to the bank, just retired as CEO of United Telephone, based in Warsaw. George, I remember George describing to me the building of the building, what is now the Innovation and Technology Center, and how involved he was in that and how proud he was of that with the telephone company. And so, you look at all these buildings, you think, the $22.3 million, that's a lot of money, but it's a lot of history. And we've always tried to respect the history of the city of Warsaw when we've done these renovations. And that's why when we proposed the Innovation and Technology Center, we knew there was going to be some street disruptions, some sidewalk disruption. We understand that could create some challenges for businesses downtown. And that's why Lisa and the team have really accelerated as quickly as we could to get particularly Center Street open, which is on schedule to likely be finished within the next several weeks. So, we can bring Center Street sidewalk and parking back in. And then we'll really maintain the construction site on the Indiana street side on the east side of the building. So, flip to the next one. You guys don't even know that Jack was nice enough to remind you, we're going to start paying more property taxes now. We've quadrupled the value of Innovation and Technology Center. But these are not big numbers, but they're real numbers. Property taxes, $239,000. Coziesco County tax is $141,000. We donated in this county alone through the United Way primarily, but other organizations nearly $150,000. And this is a number we obviously track. We have 1,175 volunteer hours to 37 not-for-profit centers in Coziesco County in 2024. So, we are dedicated to this community financially and to the community service. We love talking about Lake City University, and I'll wrap it up here. We have over 3,200 employees. We obviously don't have many employees, but that means every employee comes through here, on average, four times a year. They're in town for training. They're in town for Lake City University Development, where we teach not only job skills, but also life skills. I teach a class on personal development and leadership. Lisa teaches a class on understanding the balance sheet of Lake City Banks, where our employees can understand what our financial status looks like. They all come to town. Some of them park on the street for less than two hours. But they come from all bank locations and they eat lunch and stay here. And again, that's part of what, you know, we love bringing people here because we want people to understand the culture of Lake City Bank, not predicated upon what there is in Indianapolis or Midaryville or Fort Wayne or Auburn or Mishawaka. We want them to understand what the culture of the bank is here, where the bank has been for 153 years. So, sorry to take that much time to get to you, Mr. Mayor, but we're happy to answer any questions or any curiosity you all have.
David, Lisa, thank you so much. Not only this recent project, working with the city, your patience, and now your efforts, greatly appreciated. And then reminding us the impact that you're having on the community. I thank you for that. Are there any questions from the board or comments?
I wouldn't make a comment. Just to substantiate, I do have a downtown business. And Lake City Bank employees do shop and spend money in downtown Warsaw. And I've also been involved with WCDC Main Street, Warsaw, for more than 25 years. We've had some great board members who are employees of Lake City Bank. And whenever we've had a big project or anything, Lake City Bank has always stepped up to help. So, just kudos.
We appreciate that.
Well, thanks for letting us take the time to do this while we're at the meeting of the council. And if you ever had any questions, and if you ever hear anything from people during, particularly during this construction period, Lisa and I made a visit last week to one of the downtown merchants who had some concerns. And we changed the construction plan a little bit to free that up. So, if you hear anything at all from people downtown or anywhere, don't hesitate to reach, Jeff knows how to get ahold of us. Don't hesitate to reach out because we don't want this to be an impediment to a good holiday season for downtown Warsaw businesses. But we'll be really excited when we get Center Street open and really focus on the current D side. So, thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
I would just like to say that I want to thank Lake City Bank for being a good partner with the city. It's, you know, if people, if businesses don't step up and take on buildings like this, the buildings just decay. And I just want to express to you my thanks for what you do and for being a good partner with us. And I'd also like to say, he brought up the fact that you're going to be paying more taxes. I just said, thank you.
Jeff and I were talking about this. You've seen banks grow throughout our lifetimes. And historically, when a bank gets to $1 billion in assets in the old days, in fact, they get this big corporate head that says, we're a billion-dollar bank now. We've got to have a big fancy building. You might be surprised to know, when Fort Wayne National built that tower, downtown Fort Wayne, they were a $2 billion bank. And they built, I think, a 23-story tower. So, we thought it was a big deal when we became $4 billion and fixed the second floor of the main office. That's because we've got what we believe is pretty grounded and servant perspective on running the business. And we've got people from all over, really every county surrounding us. They come to work here every day. But we want them to keep coming to Warsaw. So, thanks for your support.
So, people coming from all around, when I went to Lake City Bank to visit with them for this project, walking out, I bumped into two former students of mine from Warsaw that are now working for your bank. So, it's all over, but also the investment, local kids growing up and now working for you. And so, that was neat to see that.
We have 27 interns in the summer of '25. And 21 of them were here in Warsaw. The next generation of workforce. Thank you all.
David, I have a curiosity question for you. You mentioned the archaic, old archaic banking laws in Indiana. Do you have any branches outside of the state?
No, it's not by design. It just hasn't made sense for us to do that. It's, you know, going back to those archaic bank laws, interestingly enough, they were designed to protect Indiana banks so that every community would have its own community bank. And so, every county had a number of banks like we did, the First National Bank of Warsaw in this building and Lake City Bank. But the intentions of the banking statutes ended up not protecting Indiana banks, but exposing them to ultimate acquisition. If you think about it, in Indianapolis and back in my days of Chicago banking, they were my customers. Indiana National Bank was the second-largest banking state. Merchants National was the third-largest, and American Fletcher was the largest. And none of them existed after 1990 because they all got gobbled up by big out-of-state banks because of our banking laws. But that really opened the door for us, if you think about it. We wouldn't be who we are in Fort Wayne without Fort Wayne National sale to National City Bank. So, it's worked out okay. But a lot of banks got churned up. When I joined, when I went into banking in 1984, there were 17,000 banks in the country. And today, there's less than 4,000. And if you look at us in a ranking, at $7 billion, we're somewhere on the 230th, 240th largest bank in the country of those 4,000. So, it goes down really quick after $7 billion.
Good job.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening. Appreciate you coming in again and sharing.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks. Yeah, I appreciate the questions. And again, it's neat, like I said, to be reminded of the impact that they're having on the community. So, nice of them to come in tonight and share. It's taken a while, but we were able to work it out for tonight. We will now go to reports oral and written. The Warsaw Redevelopment Commission Annual Spending Plan has to be presented to the city council. I don't think there's any action that needs to be taken. Jeremy unfortunately taken ill and unable to come and present. So, he may be back to highlight or talk about some of these items. But it is a for-the-record, he's presenting it to the council.
Basically, it was a new statute the last couple of years that these have to be put in the gateway for the TIF spending for a year, even though they basically already have all this information in all the budgets. So, go figure.
He may, another evening, want to talk a little bit about it, but for the record, it's been presented to the board. Want to thank Jack and Mike also for serving on that board. That'll take us to unfinished business, ordinance number 2025-10-02. This is a second reading, Husky Trail annexation. Justin, thanks for helping us out with this tonight.
Yeah, just filling in for Jeremy on this. This is the second reading for the Husky Trail annexation. Just as a reminder, this was presented to the council on August 18th. And there was a public hearing held on October 6th. The fiscal plan was also presented on October 6th. Just following the steps of the annexation process. October 20th was the first reading of the plan. If there's any questions, let me know. But this is approximately $272,000 property that would be annexed into the city. So, very minimal impact on city services. City resources will be very minimal on the annexation.
Any questions for Justin? Action was taken, so we do have a vote. There was a public hearing and a vote. First reading, this is second reading. Am I remembering right? Second reading on this ordinance. It's 2025-10-02. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we accept ordinance 2025-10-02.
I'd second that.
There's a motion and a second to approve on second reading. Is there any further discussion? Mary Nunn will call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, please say nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. That'll take us to new business. This is from the plan department. We have a fiscal plan first. Justin, putting you to work tonight. What are we looking at here?
Uh, no, pretty standard stuff for annexation. This is the fiscal plan. I have now included the resolution, so there's no action needed on this fiscal plan. But we will need an action on the next item of this fiscal plan. It has to be presented as part of that initial action. It has to be presented as part of that initial action that you would take on the first reading of the annexation ordinance. At the next council meeting, I will bring the resolution for the fiscal plan, that will need to be approved prior to the approval of the second reading of the annexation ordinance. With that, any questions on the fiscal plan? Again, this will be very comparable to the one we just did, it's a pretty nominal impact. It's a property that would be annexed just off of State Route 15. It will not involve any additional city services, we already, the state maintains State Route 15, so we're not taking on additional public roads. Traffic services not needed for this commercial property, so we're not really burning the city services in any way, there's already a sewer line out there, so it just makes sense, it's one of those weird gaps in the city ordinance that will be filled out through this annexation.
Can you tell us more specifically, where is this located?
So this is Tico Met, do you know where Tico Met is on 15?
Yes.
It's in between the two Tico Met buildings, on the east side.
Yeah, east, just north, right, near Tico Met. Just north of 350, 350?
Yep.
Is it actually owned by Tico Met?
No, it's owned by Ideal Construction.
So wait, next meeting, when you bring the resolution, that's when the fiscal plan will be approved?
Correct. So right now, we're just reviewing it, we don't need to take any action on this tonight, but I want to make sure we answer any questions. It is required to have the fiscal plan prepared to review prior to any action on the ordinance, so that's what we're doing right now, we're reviewing it. We can take action on the next item, this is the first reading of the annexation ordinance.
Any questions for Justin on the fiscal plan for this voluntary annexation? And no action needed, but he will answer any questions if you have any. Any questions? Hearing none, for the record, it has been presented. Action will be taken at a later time, that'll take us to the second item on new business. This is ordinance 2025-11-03. Justin?
Correct, so I am requesting council action on this ordinance first reading tonight. Just ask that you review the ordinance, if you have any questions, let me know, but it is a pretty standard annexation ordinance that we use, have to work through these processes, so this will have an impact on state services, but will also provide more contiguous area publicity.
So Justin, I know it's zoned I2, I'm assuming that's what the two Tico Met properties are zoned as well.
Correct.
Any questions on this?
This is just first reading, we need to have a second reading too.
Because you can't really approve your ordinance until the fiscal plan has been officially approved, right?
Yeah, it's standard, we do it at two separate meetings, it's all residential, this is all residential.
Justin's seeking approval of this ordinance on first reading. Any questions?
Do we need to make a motion to?
Yes, seeking a motion to pass on first reading.
I would like to make a motion to pass 2025-11-03.
There's a motion to pass this ordinance on first reading, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, it's Josh, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay. The ayes have it, thanks, Justin. Any other matters? I did receive last week, a report from Todd Braddock from the Deer Task Force, moving into November. As we started this month, 34 deer have been taken, continuing to be in the maintenance phase, but November is usually in December months where we will continue to see more deer taken. Right now, again, they're at 34 have been taken for the year.
I have three in my neighborhood that would like to volunteer.
Yeah, I was gonna say, does it include the ones in my backyard yesterday? They know they're safe.
Best we can.
They visited my garden a couple of times this year.
They like you, Jerry.
Yeah, good veggies.
You feed them well.
Jeff, I'd just like to make a comment, I know you've worked on this for a long time, we have Center Street and Main Street railroad tracks redone. It doesn't knock my lights out of my truck every time I cross it anymore, so thank you very much. I don't know how you got it done, but I've had a lot of comments, people are very happy that it was pretty bad.
Lots of phone calls and emails, help from my office staff, and then that young man out there, Dustin Dillon, also helping me and continuing to help. And the railroad called us, it was early in the month, Dustin, it was like early October, and they said, "We'll be here in three weeks, if that's okay." And Jurg and I wasn't about to say no.
No.
Yeah, so didn't help with all of the other projects that we were doing, but back to Dustin, back to our staff and the contractors, it worked out really well.
It did, yes.
I giggled, I actually had one resident say, "It's about time, you took just one week of construction, we took care of everything, and now we can get back to normal instead of the lengthy off and on." So, but a lot of credit to Dustin, his staff, and then again, the contractors. And I will say, it is a lot nicer going over those tracks, a lot nicer.
And I'd like to add, all the streets repaved downtown, Dustin, Lake Street, Center Street, it's very impressive. Thank you.
Any comments, Dustin? None? All right.
I'm putting that in my minutes.
Yeah, he's not saying anything, yeah, yeah. Anything else?
We've got some work going to be going on in this building in the next month or so, is that correct?
Yes, the HVAC system, we met with Core, we've actually met with them several times, start, starting, it's going to happen very soon, days are in the next week, they are going to take care of a major unit, they're not going to put it up on the roof, it's going to be just outside, basically taking Denny Harland's spot, so I think we'll have him park in Pierston. But they'll take care of that for several weeks, and then, December 15th to January 30th, Phase 2, they call it, they are going to fix the council chambers. So, we will be working with the council and other boards, along with the Clerk Treasurers' Office, to move all public meetings that are normally held in this council chambers to the Warsaw Police Department. Will happen at the training room. Chief Whitaker is gracious enough, along with the entire department, to let us take over three-quarters of that training room. It sounds easy, but all these laptops have to go, state law now wants everything on video record, cross your fingers, I am going to be the one running the video tech equipment for those six weeks. So I live right next to the police station, so I'll be going over there and trying to do the best I can. Justin, I may need your help every night to come and help me, but that's going to be a good faith effort, there's plenty of parking, the training room is really nice, you guys were gracious enough to approve restrooms, and so those are in there, and it's really good. So that will be for about six weeks, they then will move to wastewater collections and the Clerk Treasurers' Office, do not tell Lynn that they're coming, but they are, and that'll be about another six weeks. They then will go upstairs to building and plan for about six weeks, seven weeks, and they then will transition over, this would be in July and August, that's how long it's going to take, they'll transition over to HR and the mayor's office. A huge project that's needed to be done for a long time, you don't have, Scott, I'm sure could talk quite a bit about that, but we're going to make it right. Once it's done, I think I told you the lecture I received from Lynn a summer ago, Jeff, it needs to be done, and if we don't do it now, it's going to be worse in the future, and let's take care of it. And I will never forget that, because I was sort of remember bouncing around a little bit, and you said, "Let's do it." She's been very creative, remember our budget heading into, ending this year, and heading into 2026, a lot of credit goes to Lynn, helping us out with that, and we're going to get it done, but it is starting. I will, you'll be hearing from us in the coming weeks, probably as we get closer to December, just reminders to everybody what that will mean for us and moving forward. Right now, it looks like two council meetings. We will be here on the 15th of December, and then it'll be our two meetings in January. But you serve on all kinds of other boards and commissions, they will all be over there. So, yeah, good, I brought that up. Yeah, Jack, okay.
Yeah, I might say too, that this has sort of been in the works for, even from the previous administration, it's something, like you said, it's a long time coming, and finally, we're going to get it done.
ARPA funds, redistribution.
A supplemental.
A supplemental distribution, thank you Lynn, glad Lynn's here. And then, and then the lawsuit. That, the settlement that Scott and other attorneys were able to help us get, you know, get through all of that, and I remember those days with you, so thanks for doing that, is going to allow us to complete this $1.7 million overhaul, but it'll be done right, So yes, that is coming, and thanks, Jack. I was going to bring this up, and I probably will again, later this month or our first meeting in December, just as a reminder to the community, you can do what you want now, but I'll have something and maybe written out to where it'll be a little more formal, do whatever you want, but I'll help you out as well, just to lay that all out, so, thank you.
You can drive or walk, whichever one you want.
Snowstorm, you can come over to my house, stay at my house, all right, good, yeah, so. Anything else from the board? Dustin, good to see you, you're better half here. Gary, good to see you. Any comments or anything? Okay.
I just want to say, thanks to your crew, Dustin, they're starting to pick up the leaves again, and getting into that lovely season of trying to keep the streets swept and the leaves picked up and the trash taken care of and everything else, so.
We're in the willow way.
Yep.
I do need you to come up. Leaf pickup, doesn't have to be bagged, street, alley, how's that work?
Uh, yeah, we'll pick them up in the, on the street, in the alley, as well behind the house, wherever we can get them out to have access, you know, there's spring coming in this weekend and stuff, make sure we keep them back off the curb and along the yard, the blue and the street, it's not very popular to leave, we won't get too many, they're still around, we get around, so do that just for the next month or until we get them picked up.
So keep them off the street, keep them off the alley, keep them on your property or the tree lawn, that's the best way to do it. Can you still bag a little bit if some people want to back?
We'll still pick them up and bag, but we are picking up loosely, we might as well take advantage of the flow and out of the area. And real quick, just to reflect on the Lake City Bank project and that investment downtown, again, it's, you know, the approval of the budget and things have allowed us to build this paving and such downtown as well, so it's not only the private sector that is investing in downtown, of course, we are grateful to the city, to be resources ourselves, we're in, bringing it to downtown as well, so it's a huge thing, we can do it one-sided, it's got to be, you know, joint.
Thank you. All entertaining, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, have a safe evening, appreciate it.